Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being May 23rd, 2017. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, and it's being broadcast live on PAT. I would ask that if we can all make sure that we speak into the microphone. Couple of residents called and said they love watching us on TV, but that we need to speak into the microphone a little bit better, so I ask that everybody can maybe take note of that. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start the meeting off. If everybody could please rise for a moment of silence. And next, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our Superintendent, Dr. Herbert Levine, who's going to be introducing some of our outstanding students that are here today. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sidney O'Donnell and Colby Brown, representing Project 351, will be here at the next meeting. However, representing PVTO, which is a new program with the PBD Public Schools this year, although it was in the city last year, I'm going to ask Nick Blaisdell and his group of troubadours to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then, Mr. Mayor, if the school committee wishes, I would ask to take out of order Nick's presentation, so that he could tell the school committee a little bit about his program.
Great.
Nick, and group.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say a couple of words about Nick. Nick is a very successful and wonderful graduate of PBD Veterans Memorial High School. He'll introduce the people that he's with. He had this idea last year, that it would be a great idea for kids who would like to be tutored in math and English, ELA, and reading, to be able to get some help free of charge. And he put together this little program down at the public library, which kept growing and growing and growing, and now I'm going to turn this over to Nick, and he's going to tell you where we're at now. Nick? Why don't you come right up here and have a seat?
Don't get used to it. So my name's Nicholas Blaisdell, and this is, to my left is Devon Forsyth and Mary Margaret Santa Cruz, and we're all tutors with the PBD Volunteer Tutoring Organization. And the program started last year at basically a request from my advisor at UMass Amherst, and advisor told me that I need to, I need to get some sort of experience if I want to be a teacher. So I started searching around, and I couldn't really find anything really that I could apply to, because I didn't have my bachelor's degree yet. So I contacted Devon and Mary, and I asked them if they'd like to help me find a tutoring organization in PBD. So we reached out to the PBD Library, and they were happy to accommodate us. And we had around, probably the first year, oh, last year, we had 19 tutors, and we had 175 students, and we taught students ranging from grades one through 12 in English, math, science, social studies, and even SAT prep. And it was really successful. A lot of the students really enjoyed going. We got mostly positive feedback from parents and students, and tutors as well. And so this year, we're looking for more tutors, and we're hoping to expand. In February, I met with Dr. Levine, and we got approval to operate through PBD Public, which is a big step for us, because the library is gracious as they were. This is spatial confines that we are, that we're probably going to be exceeded this year. So this year, we're looking at probably twice, maybe four times as many students as we had last year, so we're also searching for tutors in the same degree. And as of now, we have 30 committed tutors, and we have an additional 70 who are interested after I went to the PBD High yesterday, actually, and recruited more tutors. So we have 70 who are interested, and we have 30 committed, so hopefully, the goal is, if we can get everyone to be on board, we could end up somewhere around 80 to 90 tutors, which in that case, with a 10 student ratio, we could probably have around 900 students, if everything goes to plan, hopefully. So that's what we're looking at right now, and yeah, so that's our program, the PBD Volunteer Tutoring Organization, or PVTO.
Wow. I want to thank each of you. I'm kind of blown away by those numbers, and you know, this is very heartwarming, I think, for all of us, to see our students, former students, coming back and wanting to help be a part of continuing the education for our students. You know, this is, to me, what it's all about, is investing in education, investing in our students, and to have, you want to be a part of that and take that extra step, really means a lot, I know, to probably all of us here on the committee, and really, everybody involved in education. And then to hear those numbers, so 19, you had 19 tutors last year, 175 students?
Yes.
And you think potentially, we could triple or quadruple that?
Hopefully, if we're lucky enough to get as many committed tutors, which we do. We have a lot of tutors who are willing to work on extra, to pick up extra classes, to make that happen.
That's amazing. Well, I remember, I've seen each of you before. Are you all interested in education? Is that something that all of you are interested in moving forward?
Well, I'm looking to major, right now, I'm majoring in English, and I'm looking to get a master's degree in education, and that's probably where I'm going to find myself.
Well, Mary and I, we both go to, run to the Polytech, and so it's engineering school. Both of us are going to be engineers, that's what our goal is. I can't speak behalf of Aunt Mary, but I know I'm not exactly looking for an education job, but I think just bettering the community is more what this organization's for than us trying to get the proper resources to become an educational person, I guess, a teacher in that profession.
Well, Ransville, I know, is a very easy school. I'm sure it's very easy.
Oh, yeah.
It's very easy. That's terrific.
I'm planning to work in industry and then probably become a professor or a teacher.
Great.
So right now, I'm a substitute teacher, so that's how I get my teaching, as of now, before I actually become a teacher.
So you're going to make money first, and then come to teaching?
Yeah.
What years did you graduate?
All of us, all three of us graduated class of 2015.
That's terrific. I'm not sure, maybe there might be some comments, but I really want to thank you for taking this on, and you know, your actions are going to really help a lot of kids, and this program is going to help a lot of children, and you should feel real good about that. And I know, as a committee, we really, we value what you're doing, and I'm really grateful that you're willing to take that on, so thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Mr. Mayor, they look familiar, because you saw them go up to the stage so many times at academic awards, like, the qualification.
Yep, I know the names, absolutely.
And Student Government Day, too. They've been very involved, and they've done very well. So it is really exciting to hear what you want to do, and I do think you're going to pull in a lot more students, because you've been on, what, Channel 5?
Yeah, Channel 5 did this little segment on our program.
Yeah, and then it's all over Facebook.
Yep.
And there's a really nice piece on our website, letting people know, and the word is out there, so I think you'll be very, very successful.
Plus word of mouth, too, from a lot of the parents.
That's the best advertising.
Well, the millions that watch this program.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympia?
Just real quick, what are your hours that you operate?
So right now, last year, we operated between nine and four, based on like the library's hours, but this year, we're looking at between eight and 1:50 p.m., eight AM and 1:50 p.m. And then we, most, we, classes meet once a week, for an hour and 20 minutes, so basically, it's kind of like layered into that schedule.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Rosignol?
When does the program start?
The program starts July 17th, and ends August 10th. And the enrollment form opens June 1st, which is online, and closes June 23rd, so there's only a couple, only a few weeks to enroll.
And how do they apply online? What's the web page?
Oh, it's, it's bit.ly/EnrollPVTO. So, real simple, it's bit.ly/pvto.
Perfect. Great job.
Thank you, thank you very much. Absolutely. If there's no objection, we'd like to take a couple of items out of order. I'm going to turn over to you, Dr. Levine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our new Human Resource Director, Steve Farrell. Welcome back to PBD, Steve. I know that you were here some time ago, but it doesn't matter, because I wasn't, so now, it really counts. Come on up and say hello to the school committee, please.
I'd like to thank everyone from the school committee to the school administration, everyone that I've talked to recently, welcoming back. I'm very excited. I've been working in Boston for the last 10 years, and I, again, am really looking forward to getting back to the district, to the people that I've worked with in the past, and some of the new folks. So again, thank you very much.
Mr. Farrell was in district today, working with Charlie, and Charlie will be helping him in the transition, so it's been a very good marriage for us, and we're excited to have you, Steve.
And I know, I know we had a number of strong candidates for the position, and very happy to have you on board, Mr. Farrell. I know you did a great job here when you were here before, and I'm very happy to welcome you back, and looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Now, we have some questions. Mr. Hockman, then I'll go to Mrs. Dunn.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to quickly welcome Mr. Farrell back to the school district. It's good to see you, good to have you. I know that if I have any questions for you over the course of the summer, I can find you at a ballpark, watching a baseball game, whether it's at Williamsport-
Yes, sir.
-the Little League World Series, or traveling around minor league parks around the country, so welcome back.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mrs. Dunn?
I want to add to that. I'm very happy that you're back, and it's so nice to see you again, and I know you've done excellent work in the past, and I know we're going to have a very good person running HR.
Great, thank you so much.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have one more item that we're looking to take out of order, the superintendent's report. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Levine.
Yes, please, thank you. Under superintendent's report, there is a waiver request for an Eagle Scout project that took place this past Saturday, and the Eagle Scout is here to explain some of what he did, and I know that Mrs. Dunn has been intimately involved as well with this project, and recommended it highly, so I would invite Jared Whitberg to join us. Jared, come on up. Okay, Jared, you want to tell us a little bit about the project that you engaged in?
I built four garden beds out front in the Brown School-
Hold the microphone.
...for the garden club.
He, want to repeat that, so that everybody can hear it?
I built four garden beds outside the Brown School for their garden club.
And you had some help with that?
Yes.
How many kids, how many people were helping you, and how did you get them to help you?
About 20 people showed up from the troop, and three families showed up from the school to help.
That's awesome. That's great. And there are pictures in back of us, of your accomplishment this weekend, and your contribution to the school system. We want to thank you very much, and the Carroll School, we're very, very pleased.
Brown School.
I'm sorry, the Brown School. You'll do the Carroll School next.
If I could, Jared, I just want to thank you. It's an amazing accomplishment to become an Eagle Scout. I know many of us have gone to ceremonies in the past. I love going to the ceremonies, because the commitment, and the passion, and the intelligence, and the strength, and the courage, it's amazing, the attributes that are necessary in order to pursue and become an Eagle Scout. I think it's only a couple percent of all people that start out as Cub Scouts become ultimately Eagle Scouts, and incredibly fine young men that have come from the city of PBD to achieve that distinction, and they've done some wonderful projects here in the city of PBD, across the city, at our schools, Brooksby Farm, a whole number of important projects, and this is just a great addition to the Brown School. And Jared, I want to congratulate you, and thank you for having PBD be a part of your project, so thank you.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would ask for a motion, there is a request for a waiver of the fees. In order for this project to take place, we had to have a custodian open the building, because Jared needed access to electricity, so the only way we could do that was to open the building, and I think this was a four-hour window. So there is a request that I believe Mrs. Dunn is going to make for a waiver of the custodial fees.
Yes, and I'd like to make that, make that motion, that the school committee waive the rental fees for the Eagle Scout project, which took place at the Brown.
Second.
Have you heard the motion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 Would also, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to thank Sheila D'Ambrizio, a former teacher of ours, still involved with the school district, at one time, my neighbor. I would like to thank her for all the work that she did with this project. I know that she was a huge support for Jared, so Sheila, thank you very much. Congratulations to what I assume is Jared's parents. Must be very proud. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
I also wanted to mention that Jared was at Green Fest a couple of weeks ago, which was an outstanding event, and that was a nice addition to it. So again, great to have you here, and thank you, Jared, thank you, thank you. Okay, if there's no objection, I'd like to maybe take a couple-minute break, and then go into back, or go into budget session, if there's no objection to that. Then, following our budget review, we can go back into regular session. So maybe take a one-minute break, and then we'll go right into the budget discussions.
No objection.
All right, I'd like to call the budget meeting to order. Following the budget meeting, we'll be going back into regular session, but we had a building grounds meeting that went a little later than what we intended, and we want to get into the budget discussions now. I know there's been a new sheet prepared. Dr. Levine, I don't know if you wanted to give a, turn over to you, if you want to give a little brief synopsis of what's been presented to us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the last budget meeting, the school committee gave me direction to put back, I believe it was three teachers, a custodian, and some other goodies.
K-Pairs.
No, actually, it's a, all the K-Pairs to full-time, custodian, Floater, grade-five teacher at the center, grade-four teacher at the Welch, and a grade-four teacher at the Brown. In order to find that money, which came to approximately $338,000, I worked over the weekend. Jared also worked through the budget, and we did come up with that money to bring us to zero. We have gone back and looked at every line item. We have reduced line items in the budget by sometimes very small amounts, maybe $1,000, $2,000, and we believe that we can live with the budget as presented. It would be very difficult, at this point, to find any more money anywhere in the budget line items, so I would ask that you tread very carefully regarding any further requests. But everything that you asked me to put back in the budget is there, and we are now at zero. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just had a few comments I wanted to make. I really appreciate the work, both from our administration team, but also from all of the school committee members over the last few meetings. As you know, I was not present at the meetings last week. My wife and I gave birth to a child last Monday night that is doing extremely well. There hasn't been much sleep in my house, but everybody is healthy and happy, but I know that there were some real difficult discussions that all of you took part in, and I appreciate the work. These are not easy, this is, as all budgets are, very challenging, and we're trying to do the best we can. And I thought the decisions that were made by all of you were right on. Bringing back the kindergarten pairs, I thought was an excellent decision. Bringing back the teachers, you know, to me, that's extremely valuable. We know the work that our teachers and paraprofessionals do, and I thought those were excellent additions. I appreciate the work that Dr. Levine, Assistant Superintendent Murtagh, and Jared, Mr. Stanton did, to try to work within the parameters that were set by myself and the school committee. I am able to give a little bit extra money that I wanted to present, that might be able to help a little bit, and I wanted to put forth an additional $100,000 that can be added to the budget, that can be discussed among the committee, I'm sure Dr. Levine and Assistant Superintendent Murtagh, it might have some recommendations. But I wanted to try to help, and add a little bit more to kind of utilize in these discussions, and try to minimize some of the impact. But I did think that the decisions that were made were excellent decisions, those would have, I would have, those that had my full support, would have had my full support, but I want to try to help a little bit by adding $100,000 to the budget, to utilize, as you deem fit, something that I wanted to do as a gesture to try to help us move along, and again, I appreciate all the hard work, and I know it's been difficult, you know, and some decisions had to be made that were tough, so I did want to bring that forward. Each of you might have some ideas as to how to utilize that money, but I am ready to commit another $100,000, so the addition to the budget would be 1.6 million.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that addition. It certainly makes the budget a little more palatable, and I know we appreciate it as a group, and I know the city, and the students and staff appreciate it as well, so thank you once again for your generosity. In moving forward on the proposed reductions that are before us, both in the current sheet that's with us, and prior sheets that have been given to us, there's one reduction that deals with special education paraprofessionals, and we specifically, at our last meeting, asked for Special Education Director Ruth Grubie to appear tonight, and she is here, and if we can maybe just have her explain that reduction, and have the opportunity to ask her some questions, and more explain to us, and to the viewing audience, and to the people that receive services for the Special Education Department, explain how that's, this reduction isn't in fact a reduction of services, it's actually an enhancement of services, but it's just in a different delivery. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, you too.
So, we were, Dr. Levine did his best to explain special education, but we know that you're the true expert in this district for that department, so we thought it would be best if you were to come here tonight and say hi to us.
Hi.
So in the budget, and I know you work closely with Mr. Stanton, and Dr. Levine, and Ms. Murtagh, in regard to the development of the special education portion of the budget, we have before us a proposal for a reduction of 10 special education paraprofessionals. And we all know in this, at this committee, the value that the special education paraprofessionals provide, not only to the students that are in need of those services, but also to the staff members that are in the classrooms where the paraprofessionals are working. So if you could please explain to us, and again, really, to the viewing audience, what, why is it that this recommendation is before us, and how does it move our special education programs, how does it improve them and move them further down the line?
Well, it's twofold. We're, and it's not because of the program that we're offering at the Brown School, but it's in light of that, because of, I don't know, let me just start with the co-teaching model. So we're implementing a co-teaching model at the Brown School, which would incorporate a general ed teacher and a special ed teacher in a classroom with two pairs, which would, all research shows that having two certified teachers in a classroom, as well as two supporting staff in a classroom, with the full inclusion class of the autism students, will enhance, it's just better for kids, it's a whole-child approach. Currently, in that model, there are 40 students and 19 pairs. Based upon the numbers that we did, we reduced it for the two pairs in each classroom, and it ends up being 10 or 11, if there's a student with a one-to-one. So we reduce it, nine pairs in that particular program. The reduction in the pairs for the special ed program is a reduction district-wide. It's not necessarily from the Brown School, if that answers the question.
It doesn't, and I don't know that it's, I guess I did pose it in the form of a question, but I want to, and you provided an explanation-
Okay.
-as to the programmatic shift-
Yes.
-that's, that's we're going to see in this district, under your leadership, and I'm, I for one, I'm happy to see it. I mean, I think all the data that I've read and heard about regarding co-teaching absolutely supports what you're saying, in that the methodology of, and delivery of instruction to a student in the co-teaching model enhances their learning, enhances their, the experience that the student has, not just in an academic sense, but in a social sense, and a lot of other ways. So I'm happy that you've, in the short time that you're here, have been able to introduce this model, because again, it will help our students, and I for one, am in full support of it, so I wanted to also bring you here to thank you for showing that level of leadership. And also, Dr. Levine, at our last meeting, indicated that there's already been a tremendous conversation taking place among staff, and as a, there's an excitement and a buzz regarding this co-teaching model, and that's important, because it's a difficult concept to have staff members buy into. I think that may be the most challenging part of it, and to hear how far you were down the road on that already is really pleasing and exciting to me, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the Chair, just one additional piece of information. Our school adjustment counselor, who's going to be working with this program, Shannon Compton?
IEP Team Chair.
Yeah, IEP Team Chair.
Yep.
Has called every parent in this program to explain the new concept, and it's universally well-accepted, so the parents are actually very excited about this, and we're thrilled. I think that's me.
It is.
Good. I think we have some questions from the committee members. Start with you, Mrs. Copter.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mrs. Grubie, thank you for being here. It's always a pleasure. I appreciate this new initiative that's being brought forward. My question is, what will be the formula to calculate the rate of success or non-success, and when will we hear about that, and how will we hear about that?
Excellent question. So what we have currently, we have the, we have the partners and the groups, the teachers have already been chosen together. We haven't necessarily worked with the pairs yet, based upon what's decided here. So we have a survey going out to both staff, to both staff, parents, and students in the beginning of the year, almost like a baseline, and then mid-year, the same. What we want to do is embed the curriculum, I mean, embed the PD, so we're going to be working in June with the staff members, all staff members, and August with all the staff members, initially, to kind of front-load, and then embed the PD. Once we get their, once we get the results of the survey, both baseline and mid, we'll tweak if we need to tweak, obviously, some feedback from, to the principal, from the staff, but Shannon, the IEP Team Chair and I, will be in the classrooms frequently to see if that works. As you know, calls from parents, we'll hear, I'm hoping to hear very quickly, right out of the gate, if it's working or not, but I, those right now are what are our means of measuring, just the first six months or so.
And staffing-wise, will we still have the ability, ratio numbers, like I said, staff-wise, for any type of pull-out of a child, if necessary?
Of course. It's not a cookie cutter, so as, as we all know, with students that are on IEPs, we have students, like for example, speech, who have an artic issue, or some students who have some OT issues. Mostly academically, it will be, the formula is, a lot of the students who are on IEPs in this particular program have ELA or math for like 120 minutes a week and whatnot. The benefit and the beauty of this is that- The benefit and the beauty of this is that the general ed students who are not necessarily identified as special ed, who need some extra help, will have an opportunity to have small group setting. So that will be at the direction of the both teachers in the classroom with the paraprofessionals and/or the itinerant services that are there.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Grubie.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Through the chair. So you're envisioning this program shift at the Brown School currently. Are you envisioning this to move forward in any other programs that we currently have?
I'm not, we have to measure the success of it first. But we took this particular grouping of students, both general ed and special ed, because it's currently an existing program. It's really an enhancement. I'd like to take the credit for it, but it really is just an enhancement of the program. So I think that this is an easy kind of transition. I would love to see how it works. I think that co-teaching is the best model in front of kids, if you get the right people together. I've seen it succeed tremendously, and sometimes I've seen it not succeed.
No, I agree. Through the chair, I agree that the model is, if it's done right, is usually an enhancement of programs. And that's why I asked if you envision, if this is a success, which I assume it will be, to enhance other programs that we currently have.
Of course. That's definitely something that we would look at.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mr. Olympio?
Through the chair, thanks, Ms. Grubie, for coming tonight. Question is, teachers, are we, correct me if I'm, are we not adding teachers? Are we, how is, where it's going to be two teachers to a classroom? What's the ratio?
Yep. There, we're adding two special ed teachers at the Brown, and they'll be paid through the 240 grant, through the IDEA grant.
Okay. And also, too, you made mention that the paras are not going to specifically, that are being cut. It's not going to be specifically to the Brown School. So why the cut with the paras through the other schools?
That's all done by contract.
Okay.
So we will sit with the union president and go through, it's really by seniority-
Okay.
...where people wind up.
Okay.
We'll have fewer par need in this particular program and maybe in this particular school. But it won't necessarily be, they won't necessarily lose their spot at the Brown. They may be able to, through the union, they have seniority rights, and we just go by the list, by date of hire.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Grubie. I'm glad you spoke about this, because there were some questions, one of which was, I had a couple of calls from people who were concerned if their child had a one-on-one required through an IEP. That's still going to stay in place.
It will. The one-on-one, depending on the need for the one-to-one, that will, yes, that will definitely stay.
Very good. Okay. I just wanted to tell you something. It is a little bit off-topic, but I think it's of interest to the whole school committee. Mr. Miko, Mr. Olympio and I were in a meeting last night, and one of the parents explained that they had taken their child to a doctor in a different area for an evaluation, and that when they were talking, and the doctor said, well, where they were coming from, he said, you know, they have good services. He said, but the best services around, the program in PBD, Massachusetts is phenomenal.
Hey.
And he had no idea of their connection with PBD. So I thought you might like to know that. It really made us feel very proud of the system. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Unless anyone has, anyone else to say, at this point, I'd like to move for, to adopt the budget reduction consideration for the 10 special education paraprofessionals, based upon the recommendation of both the Director of Special Education and the Superintendent.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Grubie.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
So open it back up for further discussion, following Dr. Levine's remarks and my comments and the addition to the budget. Open it up for discussion. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Dr. Levine, through the chair, Dr. Levine, the additional reductions that are listed on your new sheet, can you just give us a little bit of information on that? How that would work out? What we would be at a loss for?
Sure. We took line items that we think that we either historically have money left in each year, or can live without a certain amount of money in order to reach the number that we had to reach. So we're never going to put principal in a position where they need something and they can't have it. But to begin the year, these reductions are relatively minor. Even the high school and the middle school, you're talking about line items of $15,000 and $75,000, as opposed to smaller line items in the elementary schools. The contracted services, we have calculated that we think we can reduce at this particular time by that amount. We've also, you know, all of these are a risk. There's no question about that. Sped transportation, we think that by sending fewer kids out and to, out of district and having programs that embrace our student population that has special needs, once again, we've taken that reduction. And that, you know, that is a hope, and some might say it's a dream. But that is an issue, that's a line item that we have to fund to whatever it is that we spend. So we're reducing it with the hope that we won't need that money, but if we do, we're going to have to find it somewhere else in the budget. So all of these cuts and reductions were done through very careful washing of the budget after your direction last time. We do not feel that any of these are intrusive into our daily operation.
Thank you for that explanation. Just my personal opinion at this point, and I'll put this out there to the rest of the committee members, the mayor has given us an additional $100,000. Based on some of the research that I've done, my preference at this point would be to possibly add back one of the high school guidance positions at $80,000, and then take the 20 that's left over and put them back into the additional reductions that the superintendent just mentioned, filter them through those lines. And that is my, you know, just kind of what I'm thinking out loud right now, based on some homework that I've done in regards to the guidance position and listening to your explanation of these lines. I'll yield for now.
Thank you. Just doing kind of quick work here. We were to add all of the elementary school supplies and textbooks. That would be about, and put those back, that would be about $23,000 for elementary school. Mr. Miko?
Thank you. Through the chair, to the committee. I also agree with Ms. Carpenter. I do believe that guidance position is valuable. And I hate to put value on one position versus another, but to me, elementary positions are the most valuable. So if I were going to go with any position, I would either go with the grade-two teacher at the Carroll or the grade-three teacher at the Center. But with that, with that said, I would also entertain any offers from anyone regarding the textbooks or supplies. I just think that our, many of our teachers spend so much money out of pocket every year, and I just think to have those supplies in their classroom are just so vital for instruction. And I'll leave, I'll yield with that. Thank you.
It would be, thank you, Mr. Miko. It would be $37,000 for high school, middle school, and all the elementary schools, to put those back in. $23,000, as I said, for the elementary schools. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. So we're down to the most, most, most difficult portion of the budget, because we're really, we have some difficult choices to make tonight. I would, and I appreciate my colleagues putting forth their thoughts on this. I would reinstate all the supply lines. I'm not willing to take that risk to the elementary schools, the high school, learning academy, vocational, curriculum materials, performing arts equipment. I'm willing to take a risk on special education contracted services. I'm not willing to take a risk on athletic contracted services, because I think we historically go over on that line. I am willing to take a risk on special education transportation, Medicare, and central advertising. The way I see that is that reduces the $101,565 to about $68.5. So if the mayor's providing us with an extra 100, that leaves $31.5 in the black. I would, at this point, reject the superintendent's request for additional district-wide library books and recover that $15,000. I would level fund the coaches line 309 and recover that $6,722. I would reject the Higgins building access monitor at $20,514. I would take the money that we've just put together and reinstate the grade-three teacher at the Center School or the grade-two teacher at the Carroll School. I think either one of those positions, I think the most important positions that we have, besides superintendent, of course, are teachers in front of students. I do value guidance counselors, Ms. Carpenter. My, my thoughts aren't in any way reflective of the hard work that Guidance Department does. I think that Dr. Levine has expressed a vision for restructuring of that department, a reduction of number of students, just, you know, heads, bodies, and chairs up at the high school. And for those reasons, I think we can do, I think that the elementary school teacher is more important than all of those items that I mentioned. And I know Dr. Levine has some strong feelings about the Higgins School access monitor. It was the last addition in the 1617 budget. It's a valuable position. I don't dispute that. But in library books is certainly important. These are hard decisions. These aren't easy ones. But if I can put a teacher back in front of students, particularly at the Center or Carroll, where the populations are changing, the demographics of those buildings are changing, to the point where I think an additional teacher at those grade levels would be most valuable.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you. To that point, through the chair, Mr. Hockman, you're correct. It is one of the hardest times now, when we get down to weighing one position over another position. And I do agree with you about the elementary teachers, I do. What I see in my decision-making in that regard by asking for the guidance counselor over the teachers is because I feel like the budget is so fluid that we will end up with them back anyway, because the numbers contractual-wise will reflect that, and I feel like it will happen anyways. And that's why I was taking the gamble on the, on the guidance. That, I just wanted to explain myself.
Mr. Mayor, just on that point?
On that point, Mr. Hockman.
And Ms. Carpenter, you don't need to explain yourself. These are tough decisions.
I know.
And you have, you have great intentions, and you've served this committee and this community well for a long, a long period of time. We're just, we're splitting the hair that we split and split and split already. So thank you for the explanation, but you don't know me or anybody else. We know your intentions are good. So if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I don't know what the will is at this point, but can we start knocking some stuff off that I think we can get off the list by way of a motion? So I think, I think we, through the chair, to the superintendent or Mr. Stanton, if you can maybe help me, I think we've already voted on the guidance positions and the department guidance, department head for the Guidance Department. So those are already off the chart. But I don't know that we did the department head for consumer education?
We did not.
Or the maintenance floater, or the four high school teachers and one vocational teacher, the Higgins physical education teacher? I don't think we did any of those. So I'd make a motion, if it's okay to take that in a group, unless someone has an objection, I'm happy to. So I would make a motion to follow the recommendation of the administration with a reduction in the department head of consumer education, a maintenance floater, four high school, and one vocational teacher. Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Yeah? And a Higgins physical education teacher.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 So if I-
Yes, Ms. Hockman.
So as I understand it, the three positions remaining in that column are the three elementary school teachers, one at the Burke, one at the Carroll, and one at the Center. And only, only because of the information that we received from the superintendent at our last budget meeting, in which it's clear that the population at the Burke is not affected at all with a reduction of a grade-five teacher. In other words, the same class sizes will exist as they did this year. I move to accept the recommendation of the reduction of a grade-five teacher at the Burke School.
Second. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter? Yes.
Yes.
If I may continue, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the budget reductions on the top portion, with the exception of the Kylie move expenses we've already worked on, so that's off the table, too. I would make a motion to reject the reduction in the teaching supplies or instruction supplies slash textbooks at the Brown, the Burke, the Carroll, the Center, the McCarthy, the South, the Welch, the West, the Higgins, the high school general instruction, the PBD Learning Academy, the vocational teaching supplies, curriculum materials, and software, as well as performing arts equipment. I move to reject those.
Second.
Do you want to continue? Not yet. That would total $50,000, I believe. We have a motion from Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Miko?
Me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Miko? Yes.
No. No.
No.
I know Mr. Olympio and Mrs. Dunn have raised their hand. Do you want to jump in now, or do you want to keep rolling?
No, go ahead.
Mrs. Dunn, you want?
Keep going.
Mr. Hockman?
I would move to accept the recommendation of the reduction of central advertising, Medicare, special education transportation, and special education contractual services.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. As you know, I've asked questions before on the Medicare reimbursement, and I know that the federal budget was revealed today with further cuts, actually very devastating cuts to public education. I know you're only looking for a reduction of $5,000, but it does concern me, do you see any, any huge problems with the Medicare reimbursement? see any, any huge problems with the Medicare reimbursements on the horizon?
Not right now. I think, through the chair, I think we're pretty far away from a federal budget, and I don't think that the federal budget will look anything like what Trump has proposed when it finally comes out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you.
Okay, motions on the table, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Through the chair, a question, a clarification for me, and then I think Jared has one, too. Mr. Hockman, what, did you direct anything about the athletics contracted services, equipment and supplies?
No.
Okay. So that hasn't been taken up yet?
I was going there next.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, Mr. Stanton?
I just want to clarify the difference between the Medicaid, which what you're talking about, and Medicare. What we're proposing for a reduction is actually the Medicare, and I got them confused at the last meeting, my apologies. The Medicare, basically what it is, is it's .0145% of a salary that we pay towards the Medicare.
That's right.
So, and that's, just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Mrs. Stanton.
Ms. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stanton, are you, I'm sorry, are you able to give us an updated number?
Yes, absolutely.
We're at that point now where we're going to be, we're going to continuously look at you to make, to make this work. And while you're looking at that, I'll bring up athletic contracted services. This is, as I said a little bit earlier, this is a line that I'm not comfortable taking a risk on. This is a line that deals with some safety issues for our students, you know, football equipment that has to have annual reviews and refurbishment. It's just one of those lines, I think along the lines as to what Ms. Dunn spoke about last week with regard to custodial lines that come back biting us threefold or fourfold. And for that same reason, I'm not comfortable with the maintenance custodial supply line either. So I see a lot of head shaking and nodding in the right, in the right direction, as far as I'm concerned. If that's what I'm reading, I'd make a motion to reject the reduction for athletic contracted services and maintenance custodial supplies.
So through the chair, just to get you a number, I believe that you have eliminated reductions that I have proposed of $49,000 so far, and you're about to vote on a $12,500 item and a $7,000 item.
Motion was made, can we have a second for discussion? Motion was made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico for discussion, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Would you mind separating the two? Because I feel completely comfortable with your line of thinking for the athletic, but not necessarily so much in the custodial line. I think that that may be cut in half or taking a small piece, just to put a little bit of money aside, but I completely agree with you 100% regarding the athletics. Far too long since we've been on this board, the one thing that you never want to do is take away maintenance in any way, shape, or form. So I'd be dead set against moving that one, but I'm a little bit less rigid on the custodial line. If you wouldn't mind amending your motion, just to do it one at a time.
So if, through the chair, if I hear my colleague correctly, you want to separate the motion, and you want the motion to, the first motion to be to reject the reduction in athletic contracted services, I so amend.
Heard the amendment from Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. On the amendment, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a question, probably through you to Mr. Stanton or the superintendent, on the athletic contracted services, is that specifically for the, for the athletic equipment, or does that include any of the equipment that we have to use to maintain the turf field? Or are they both in that?
It's both.
It's both. I don't, I don't think, I really don't think we can cut it because we, we have specific requirements for maintenance on that field.
The motion was to keep it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
But it's on, it's a reduction.
Right, so we're pulling it back.
To reject.
Correct.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 If I may, on the second portion, I would just like more information to Mr. Stanton regarding the $7,000 custodial supply, electrical supply equipment, what that entails, what that would look like with it versus without it.
Through the chair. So, right now, as you saw in the budget that you approved, with the reductions, the $89,000, what that was, is that was, that got it level funded. What this additional $7,000 would do is we would spread it across their budget. It would just limit them a little bit on some supplies that they, that they might need for the schools, but I think it's manageable, but...
My fear with that, through the chair to the board, is you're looking at supplies for cleanliness, you're looking at supplies for hygiene, you're looking at supplies district-wide that, and granted, I mean, we're talking about the $7,000, it's not a tremendous amount of money. I just, that scares me when the price of everything is going up, it's not going down, and we're looking at under-level funding a line from last year. So that would be my fear in reducing that line.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
To add to what Mr. Rosignol just said, my worry is, the Higgins is brand-new. We actually don't have any type of a history to know what type of maintenance supplies we need here. And I'm thinking, you know, electrical supplies, that could be anything from a light bulb on up to, you know, any of, any of the technological necessities that we need in this building.
Yes.
I'm leery of cutting that for that reason, mainly because of this school. I think that you can get a pretty good read on the other schools, and you might be able to know where you can, you know, save here or there. But I think that we need at least another year of history in this building because things are going to start wearing out already. Also, just in general, I don't ever want to go back to the days where we sent memos home asking for paper towels, soap, or any of the other maintenance necessities that we need to provide, so, thank you.
Mr. Hockman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I make a motion, which I'm prepared to, if I can go through you to Mr. Stanton to just get a, an accounting, if you will, where are we?
So I'm showing right now, we need to come up with $195,565. So that's, that's where we are from zero.
Does that include that extra $100,000 of the mayor?
Correct. So through...
Whoa, 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 hold on. So, we started at zero tonight, correct?
Correct.
I'm looking at $61.5 of reductions that have been eliminated up to this point, including the athletic contracted services. And I'm looking at the mayor infusing $100,000, so I'm looking at a surplus right now of $38.5.
I'll just, I'll...
We haven't voted on some of these reductions.
Yeah, that's why I came up with that.
We're assuming. You're assuming.
Assuming, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, assuming.
Okay. So, no offense to you, Mr. Stanton, I like Dr. Levine's response better. No, no, and, and again, you're...
We just figured it out differently.
Yeah, no, he's...
Mr. Stanton, you're right.
Right.
In where we are on the, on the big scheme. On what we've done tonight, Dr. Levine, if I may, you're saying we're plus $38.5?
Yes.
Okay. So, if, if I can, and based upon the comments of the committee, I'd move to reject the reduction in the maintenance custodial supply line.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs., by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Reject.
Reject.
Yes.
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 Okay. So now I'm going to go to a little more, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Yeah. So, so that brings us down, Dr. Levine, to $31.5?
Yes, I show $68,500 that has been reduced from my reduction.
That's what I, that's what I have, too. And, and again, no reflection, we appreciate the work you do. We know these are hard decisions, and we're laboring with it, as you did all weekend. So we now, we now delve further and get more difficult. And I might be on some sketchy ground here with, with the rest of the committee, but I will, we, we all value the hard work and the time and effort that our coaches and assistant coaches put in with our middle school and high school students on a daily or seasonal basis. And last year, in the last budget, we finally gave them a raise that was long, long overdue. And only because of that, I would ask that the, and it's a small amount, but we're really grasping, frankly, I'm trying to grasp enough money to buy a teacher. So I'd ask that line 309, which is in the athletic budget, be level funded, which would, which would provide us with a recovery of $6,722. And I'd make that in the form of a motion.
So, Mr. Hockman, just so I understand, it's, it's what it was last year?
Correct.
After the increase that we gave last year, just keeping it, okay.
Yes, I'm not looking to, the increase that was received last year is, I'm not touching.
Yep.
I'm just suggesting that perhaps, a very, very small amount, and it is, but the $6,722, because there was an increase last year in this line, that perhaps we can forgo that and...
I got you.
Thank you.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
No. This is not required in the contract, correct?
No.
No.
Yes.
67.
Sixty-some odd.
67.
Back up to 38. 38?
68.30, we're up to about $40,000, somewhere around there. 39, I think.
Okay. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. And, and I know these are hard votes, and I respect each of you for your vote. It's not, moving on along these lines, and, boy, I'm, I'm, this one may be a difficult one for me to suggest, but the district-wide library books at $15,000, I know, boy, I was an English minor, and I'm a voracious reader, and I know the value of books, and we're sitting in a library as we conduct these meetings, and I'm talking about not funding this line. But frankly, at this, this budget, I think, if I do, if we could get up to the number to hire, to retain a teacher, it makes it worthwhile, just for this budget. So, before I make that motion, because I don't want to put anyone in a difficult spot, if anybody wanted to speak on that subject or...
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter, then Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Levine, is this line item an addition to what is the current amount that we have in there?
Through the chair, it's, it's through the, the school budgets, so it really fluctuates. I would say each school, depending on the size, is anywhere from $500 to two grand.
Okay.
It's in books and supplies. So this is a $15,000 infusion on top of that. It's directed at the Welch this year. I would like at least $5,000.
You didn't help it. Oh, just that, I was going good and...
Yeah, well, I'd like at least $5,000 for the Welch, because it's in terrible repair, terrible disrepair, the books are in terrible shape.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, in, in that, with that information, I would ask that this addition be reduced to $5,000, and that $5,000 allotment go to the Welch school.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico, but I want to go back to Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I would, I would like to keep that full $15,000 in there. The reason being that as time goes on, the library needs to replace and repair a lot of books across the district. And if we cut that now, even if you give the $5,000 to the Welch, throughout this year, there is probably going to be $10,000 minimum of books that need to be replaced or repaired throughout the district, even as the year goes on. When we don't keep up with that, it's just like the maintenance on the buildings, when you don't keep up with the maintenance on your library books, and you don't go through them consistently to make sure that they're in good repair, then you need infusions. And to me, it makes better sense to have a good program where they're being cared for on a year-to-year basis, rather than worrying as you go forward, there will always be difficult budgets. And libraries are the heart of your school. I know that people think that everyone reads on Kindles and Chromebooks and everything, but there's still nothing like a child learning to read a book. And the research is now proving that it is actually better to learn to read a book than to read on the computer screen. So for the upkeep and maintenance of our libraries, I'm, I'm going to support keeping that full $15,000 in there to be used throughout the district.
On the motion, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. I've been on the fence with this one for a while, but I've actually had a couple of great conversations with teachers. There's a lot of programs out there that will actually give you free books. And what you have to do is basically unpack them, go through them, and then disseminate them. So I know, I'm actually going to vote for Mr. Hockman's motion, because I know that that program is, is being looked at by a couple of teachers right now. And the only thing that we would really have to provide is people to go through them, and then to distribute them throughout our school district. So if that comes into play, that will be well worth anything that we're looking to save here, because I think it will actually exceed that dollar amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. On the motion, Mr. Amico?
Through the chair of the committee, I agree with Ms. Dunn. I think in the age of technology, it is really neat to see kids reading books. It might be an ELL student at the Welch, it might be a special ed student at the Brown. I think it's $15,000. I think we can absorb this and, and maybe make a difference in one, two, three kids' lives. It starts with reading, as we all know, and I'd like to keep that line item in there, $15,000 for library books district-wide. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. Yeah, this is, this is a tough one. I mean, we all, we all value education, or we wouldn't be here, and we know that the fundamental block for education is reading. I do, I, I thank Ms. Carpenter for bringing up the point that this is in addition to already existing lines. We're still funding library books. This is, this is a request from the administration for an additional funding of those lines, and there's no doubt as to the value of buying more books. And I couldn't agree with Ms. Dunn more about how valuable books are. But I appreciate also Mr. Rosignol's introduction of new information in regard to some, whether they're grants or programs that are available out there that teachers are already working on. So although this is a difficult motion for me to make, and a difficult, difficult motion for me to approve or vote in favor of, thank you.
All right, we have the motion on the floor to, oh, Dr. Levine, do you want to ream?
Sorry, just, just one, one last. I believe that this should be a $15,000 line item for library books every year, until we're satisfied that we've caught up. There are programs with free books, and I know that some of our teachers are exploring that. Libraries are more than just books, and some of our books are quite tattered. There are magazines, there are collections. So, I would suggest to you that, thinking into the future, it's very hard to curl up on the couch and read a computer. There's nothing like reading a book. It brings you, your, your imagination to places where you've never been before, and that's hard to quantify. I think we have an obligation. I'd like to see this line item in the budget every year for the next five to seven years, until we're satisfied that we've done our job.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. As been, has been said many times, these, these decisions are very difficult. And I just want everyone to know that what we're working towards, in my mind, is funding one of the people positions. And as it's been said, we're not cutting the library books, it's an addition. I agree with everyone on this issue. But my goal right now is to try to work that number to get some people back in front of our kids. So, I'm very sorry if, if this is a hard one, there's still going to be books there, this is the, the year that you have to make these tough decisions. So, I would still go for the reduction of the fifteen thousand, because it is in an addition in the line. I'm not sure where his motion is right now, if it was the five thousand or the fifteen, I was going to get clarification. But I just want you to know, it's an increase in the budget. We're not cutting library books, we're, it's an increase.
My understanding is the motion is to reduce it from fifteen to five?
Yes.
And the five would go to the Welch School?
Yes.
Okay. Motion on the floor?
Yep.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ralton?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Yes.
Carpenter?
No.
No.
Because I'm one of the fifteen.
Yes.
No.
Please.
(laughing).
Yes.
Okay.
No.
So, that was another ten that's been added.
Around fifty.
Forty-eight, seven.
Close brand.
I want the ultimate grant.
(laughing).
All right, fifty grand.
Can I?
Mr. Olympia?
No.
Do you still have the floor?
No, no, I'm happy to yield.
That guy's at the floor plan.
Can I zero in on a couple of line items? On line three eighty-seven under maintenance, equipment repair, has this been addressed where it's been an increase of seventy-seven thousand dollars to the budget? Was, is there any, line three eighty-seven under maintenance, equipment repair? That four hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, is that maintenance contracts that were locked into or?
Um, I can tell you instead right now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Olympia, what line are you on?
Three eighty-seven.
Thank you.
I think with all the...
Most likely what we do, I'm going to get the info file, but what we do is we encumber to, to repair the equipment.
Okay.
So, so it's contracted services.
Okay. And it's, so was FYI, FY seventeen, was that line item, was that incorrect?
Through the chair. What they did this year, especially in the maintenance department, is they budgeted as to what the actuals are. And every single year, what they used to do is they used to make transfers at the end of the year. So, last year's budget was three thirty-three.
Yeah.
But our actual expenses were quite a bit higher.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Trying.
Well, actually... Mr. Olympia, you still have the floor?
Yes. Getting back, see, just want to explore this, explore this line, it's a, let's see, was line under technology, okay, four seventy-seven, I'm sorry, four eighty, equipment, and it's level funded, two eighty-one. What's, I mean, is that, is there any room in there? I mean, have we, no?
Through the chair. This is one of the budgets that I froze this year.
Okay.
So, some of the things that we planned to do this year, knowing that we would be very tight at the end of the year, I froze, I gave some, but I froze about two hundred thousand dollars of this money.
Okay.
To go toward a shortage. So, we don't want to freeze it again. We don't want to mess with it again.
Okay.
Because we have things that we have to do, including infrastructure, the purchase of new Chromebooks, and keeping up with our five-year technology plan as well.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Mr. Rosignol?
Just a contractual question regarding fifth grade. What is our contractual number that we have to go over to get a, an extra teacher?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
So, I think we're at fifty thousand dollars or thereabouts right now.
Forty-eight, seven is what I have, through the chair.
I, I don't know how, which order we're going to, the way I see it, we need ten thousand dollars more. I do, I do fuzzy math, ten thousand dollars more to buy back both, both the Carroll School and the Santa School teachers. And I say that because we haven't, we haven't taken on the budget reduction of the Kylie moving expenses, which I think is going to come out of a subcommittee later on, and there's eighty thousand dollars sitting on the table there. So, that eighty plus the fifty, we're at a surplus, gives us one thirty if we choose to adopt that. And I have seventy, seventy thousand dollars for each of the teachers. My next, am I, am I...
Say that again, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah.
There's been a method here, Mr. Mayor. So, we're presently with the budget reductions additions that we've worked on through this budget process, including tonight, and a surp, and your infusion of the hundred thousand dollars, which was instrumental and key to all of this, we're at a surplus of fifty thousand dollars. We have not voted on a reduction of the budget, which is in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for the Kylie moving expenses, which is sitting out there. We haven't voted it up or down. If we vote it up and we, we take that, and that eighty thousand dollars reduces lines, I figure what they are.
Eighty rent.
Right. That would give us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on the plus. And each of the elementary school teachers are ten thousand, uh, seventy thousand dollars, meaning that we, we, in my scheme of things, we'd need to find another ten thousand dollars to get both of those teachers back. So...
If I could, so, would the, it would just be the moving expenses, the other item for rent is already in?
Correct. Well, they're both in there. This is a reduction, because I think that there was a capital...
Okay, so if we took the eighty out and then with the reductions we've made, we're ten thousand short?
For two teachers.
Is that true?
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
You guys are doing a great job.
If, if, if it's down to that, I mean, I can go ten thousand more.
Save two jobs.
And save two jobs, certainly.
I move to...
Hold on, I'm not sold. Hold on a second. Yeah, I just want to make sure...
So...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Olympia, you go ahead.
So, through the chair. So, if we're going to add back that eighty thousand, okay, so that's a reduction.
We already, if, if, may I have a...
Yeah.
We have in the budget, the hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for those expen, those moving expenses. The reduction that was proposed was through a capital in appropriation through capital funds that we haven't accepted or rejected yet. So, we would reduce the lines, there are two lines in the budget, the total hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
This adoption of the eighty thousand dollar offset, if you will, is, would reduce that hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars by the eighty thousand dollars. So, it would be a re, it would be a reinfusion or an infusion into the budget by that amount.
Okay.
Through the chair, may I ask? So, I count forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars that you have eliminated as reductions, leaving fifty-two, approximately fifty-one thousand, three hundred dollars from the mayor's hundred. And then are you adding the eighty?
If, if...
To come to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, approximately a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars?
That's what my next motion is going to be.
Okay.
And then the short, the shortfalls the mayor is saying that he'll come up with?
Two thousand.
Couple of thousand dollars.
Two jobs.
Absolutely.
It might, it might mean that Santoros doesn't get an order of spaghetti meatballs every, you know, for spaghetti meatballs every day.
I think that's good work.
So, I'm going to make the motion to accept the budget reduction for the Kylie moving expenses in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call vote?
Mr. Ralton?
No.
Mr. Olympia?
No.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
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 I think that's good work.
So, I'm going to make the motion to accept the budget reduction for the Kylie moving expenses in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call vote?
Mr. Ralton?
No.
Mr. Olympia?
No.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Yes.
Through the chair, I count a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollars now as a surplus.
I make a motion to reject the recommendation to reduce a teacher, grade two at the Carroll and grade three at the Center.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote?
Mr. Ralton?
Yes.
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 Hold on one second. Where's the Carol? I told you I was going to do that one. Oh, there appears one. Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Yes.
This was for grade two Carroll, grade five Center?
It's actually grade three Center.
Grade three Center, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because it says it was already back in.
Yeah, because you already brought back five last time.
It was five.
It was messed up, that's why I took it in.
So...
Mr. Hockman?
With that, Mr. Mayor, I think we've come to a balanced budget, unless Mr. Stanton...
I would add the nine to it.
Yes.
Through the chair, I just want to make sure that we're all counting the same things, just because, because I'm actually showing still a deficit that we need to come up with of, with everything, of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Okay. Could we go through it?
Mm-hmm.
If I may, Mr. Mayor? Through you to the business manager. I'll go through the line by line on this sheet. I believe we voted to accept the, the budget reductions for the special education tuitions, the high-low substitutes, health insurance reduction, maintenance, utilities, custodial overtime, special education transportation, special education legal. I don't remember if we rejected or accepted the homeless transportation.
You, you accepted it.
We accepted it, okay.
As it's stated on the new sheet.
Yeah, okay. We accepted the reduction for workers' compensation, athletics, the superintendent salary, curriculum, Medicare, technology, and Kylie moving expenses.
So, you accepted all of that, but you reduced the legal from thirty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand, eight fifty-five.
So, can you, would you mind doing that math for me?
Yep, so the, the total accepted in that column is one million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-four.
Yeah. Okay. We voted to accept the reduction in the department head for consumer education, the maintenance floater, the four high schools slash one vocational teachers, the ten special education parent professionals, the Higgins Physical Education teacher, the grade five Burke teacher, the two high school guidance positions, and the department head of the guidance.
I also added in this reductions, the athletic coaches, of sixty-seven, a hundred and twenty-two dollars. Therefore, that gave us a total reduction of one million, in this column, of one million, twenty-three thousand, seven ninety, of a possible one million, one sixty-three, seven ninety.
And the differential primarily being the two teachers?
The two teachers.
At the one at the Carroll, one at the Center.
Correct.
We then accepted the reduction for special education contractual services, special education transportation, Medicare, and central advertising. I think we rejected, everything else in that column is...
Correct. So, that total is fifty-two thousand, five sixty-five.
We then, in regard to the requested addition for library book supplies, we've reduced the addition to five thousand dollars from fifteen thousand dollars. So, there's a net of ten thousand dollars there. And then we had an infusion from the mayor of about a hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and eight or a hundred and nine thousand dollars. The hundred that he introduced at the beginning of the meeting, plus the, what we perceived at least to be the shortfall.
There's a, there's just a few other sections that are included in my number, which is the new revenue.
Right, so we have additional revenue by increasing the tuition at the McCarthy preschool by seven hundred and fifty dollars for the year, in anticipation of additional revenue of thirty-nine thousand dollars as a result of that. Do we need to talk about the putbacks, or is that?
Nope, that's zero.
No? Okay. We approved the additional personnel for the K through twelve guidance counselor at eighty-five thousand, which was a reduction of the requested amount of, by fifteen thousand dollars. And similarly, we approved the addition for the direct, the director of curriculum instruction and educational technology at eighty-five thousand dollars, which was a reduction of the requested amount. Are you saying that with all of that, we have, we're on the same page in terms of information? And with that, you're saying we're still short?
With the new, with the extra eight thousand, a hundred and eight thousand, my number is now a negative fifty-five, two seventy-eight.
Is that supplies? Where did that come?
So...
Negative meaning where?
Negative, we still have to, we still have a deficit.
How did that happen if we were at zero coming in?
Uh, the, the big ones were the two teachers, what really tipped the scale is the, is the two putbacks at the Carroll and the Center. So, we reduced in, of the new additional reductions, we were, of the one oh one, five sixty-five that we brought to you, we reduced fifty-two, five sixty-five. I added in the hundred and eight thousand dollars, but there were still more putbacks than, that made up that additional revenue.
If I may continue, Mr. Mayor. So, the projected amount to make us whole coming into the evening was a hundred and one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Had we adopted all the reductions and, including the, these additional reductions of a hundred and one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, we would have been zeroed out, if you will, after we made the putbacks from last week. So, out of the hundred and one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, we adopted fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, right?
Yep.
Which left us short, what, forty-seven, forty-eight thousand, forty-seven thousand?
Forty-nine, actually.
Okay, forty-nine. With that, we reduced by eighty thousand dollars by taking on the Kylie. So, we're now plus thirty-one. We get a hundred and eight from the mayor, right? Which gets us to plus one forty. We buy back the two teachers, which brings us back to zero. We reduce the library book line by ten thousand, which I think, the way I'm doing it, gives us maybe a little surplus. I think, you know, the way I'm doing it, gives us maybe a little surplus.
Mr. Stanton, we're kinda putting you on the spot, do you wanna take a couple minutes to kinda let you run through?
Should we take a recess?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break and, you know, I think a lot of numbers are going around, let's take a minute. All right, we're back on, and there was a motion made by Mr. Huckman.
If you, I'll restate, restate it so that the audience can hear if there was an audio issue. So, I, I'd move to reinstate the was it the special education legal line is what we called it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, back to the full thirty-five thousand dollars. With that, I'd mo, also move to accept the two, two requested positions, one being the elementary department head for physical education and health, the other being the secondary education department head for physical education and health, and a reduction of the grade three center school teacher.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Huckman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Good work. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think that does zero out our budget.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, with surplus.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a surplus.
Whatever surplus that there is, I move to put it to library books.
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent.
Great job, everyone.
Good work. Okay. We will now motion to leave budget session and go into, go back into regular, go back into the regular meeting? Mr. Huckman?
Before we do that, Mr. Mayor, do we have a date for a public hearing that we can announce? Or do we need some time on that?
We should do that.
Let's pick a night, it has to be ten days from?
Tomorrow. Today counts.
Not including Monday.
Not including Monday. You're on for, schedule the city council budget review of school and city for June fifteenth.
Mr. Mayor?
We have a meeting at thirteen.
Can we have a public hearing on the budget before our regularly scheduled school committing? On June thirteenth? Or is that too close?
Six o'clock.
I think that's too close.
So maybe June sixth, the Tuesday prior?
Seven.
Could we do the seventh, Wednesday?
Is June seventh good for everyone?
Seventh is the science fair. The only thing I have that week is June seventh, that evening is the science fair at seven.
It's more for the things, has to be ten days.
No, no, ten days from now.
June sixth, I think we'll.
Ten days from now, he said.
Right.
Yeah.
Depending on what time.
Only ten days from today.
That's, yeah, Tuesday.
June sixth?
Tuesday, June sixth.
Can we do maybe seven thirty?
I worked seven thirty.
Get through some Little League and all the stuff.
Tuesday, June sixth at seven thirty will be the public hearing.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
If Marge can post that tomorrow, it'd be great. All right, um, all in favor, motion to close budget hearing, budget session, and move to, back to the regular meeting? All in favor, thank you. Okay. Approval of minutes, May ninth, two thousand seventeen, regular school committee meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve May ninth's meetings, regular school committee meeting.
Second. With the correction.
Motion made by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, on the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on page one, second line from the bottom, the, the word personal, it should say make a personal donation. So just, we're gonna just need to add that word in there.
With that, correction, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Approval of bills, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number three, four, four, eight, dated May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of eight hundred, ten thousand, five hundred, three dollars and fifty-six cents. Subject to audit.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number three, four, four, eight, seconded by Mr. Rosignol, roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number three, four, five, zero, dated May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred, thirty-nine dollars and zero cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant B, number three, four, five, zero, seconded by Mr. Rosignol, roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter, yes, Mrs. Dunn?
Did we do both, both?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we, we also, in our packet, we have three specific groups of minutes for the budget hearings that we've already had. They're not listed on the agenda. I don't know whether the members would wanna approve them, or whether we wanna wait and then approve all of our budget meetings at the next school committee meeting.
I would suggest that, since it's not on the agenda, why don't we hold those budget meeting minutes for those three meetings, they'll be added, tonight, tonight's meeting will be added to that, and I think we vote at the next meeting to approve all of them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Continued business, um, Dunn, any update on the MSBA Higgins project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a, the regular May meeting was held last Thursday here at Higgins. A lot of information, and, give me a second. As we speak, the seeding was supposed to commence on the new field, as of today. Hopefully it did. Everything is, of course, governed by the weather. Right now, I'm sorry, the seeds, seeding that is being completed is actually the landscaping. Learned there's a difference. The landscaping are all of the very pretty areas that are going in around the parking areas, around the campus. Those have been seeded and they are also being planted, if you noticed, a lot more trees and landscaping has gone in, so that's going according to plan. The mixture of the soil was absolutely perfect, after much testing. The original ratios were all held out, and, and they were the ones that they ended up having to use. So that was, that was a nice problem, according to the our owner's project manager. So, things are moving, things are going to be accelerating on phase two. There is still some construction work going on, but the very first layer of the roadways is going to be laid very shortly. And we are still on time. The second phase should be completed in time for the opening of school. However, the field will not be used until fall of eighteen. So, they're, they've completed the irrigation and the drainage, and it's really almost done.
Great.
So we will have another meeting in June.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, as always. Thank you for your work. Next item for kids only, before-after-school program update, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Levine.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will ask for a motion once again to approve the second year of FKO's three-year contract. According to the school committee, the direction was for me to evaluate the program's effectiveness and then make a recommendation to this board. I am recommending that we move forward and approve a second year of the contract. I am recommending that we approve a second year of the contract at the same price, you may change that. And the reason I'm recommending that is because FKO took a bit of a loss this year with the establishment of the before-school program. It is its first year, and first-year programs sometimes suffer from lack of enrollment. We got a couple of healthy enrollments at a couple of schools, but we didn't do as well at some others. And FKO ran all of the programs anyway in order to service the students that had signed up, and they, they have run it all year and done a very nice job with it. We do expect that the enrollment numbers to go up next year, but I do believe that it would be fair to hold the line this year at the, I believe it's sixty-six thousand dollars reimbursement from FKO, and that is my recommendation.
Move follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Huckman, on the motion, Mr. Rosignol?
Just lost my train of thought for a moment. I just wanted to say publicly that, you know, FKO did a great job holding classes when they didn't necessarily have to. Now, this vote that we're gonna take has nothing to do with the Twenty-First Century Grant, correct? Okay. So I, I do wanna applaud them for stepping up to the plate and having services when they didn't meet the requirements that we mutually agreed on. So I just wanted to state that publicly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 So, thank you very much, School Committee. In your packet, you asked for a, the center school Twenty-First Century Grant application, a copy of that, you have it.
I would like to table that discussion until we have, just, I, I just have a couple of questions for our attorney, so that would be an executive session where it's contract related.
Second. Further motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mr. Huckman, to table this matter, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Superintendent's report, should I go there? Oh, Republican.
Next item, public participation, is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? The microphone is open. Seeing no one, we'll go to superintendent's report, Dr. Levine.
Thank you, I only have one item, it has three parts to it. We have, as you know, an announced retirement by Phil Sheridan, our athletic director. Anytime a person retires from an administrative job such as this, I do take the time to redo the job description and update it. I have so done and recommended it to you for approval tonight. The athletic director job description is not only updated, but I have removed physical education and health from that job description. And I am asking you, as a second piece of this recommendation, to approve the two new stipended job descriptions for the newly created phys ed health department head for the elementary schools and phys ed health department head for the secondary schools. The reason that I do this is because I do believe that over a period of years, a lot of things have been placed upon the shoulders of the athletic director, number one, because he does them, and number two, because he does them well. But we cannot expect that somebody will walk into a new athletic director job description in a place as big as us, as complex as us, with as many programs as us, and do all the things that we've expected of Phil Sheridan. So I do believe it's time to take a look at splitting this job a bit, and I think that this makes sense. We have people who I know internally will apply for these jobs and do a wonderful job at leading health and phys ed, maybe giving it more, a little bit more attention than has been given in the past, and through discuss, and that's through discussion with Mr. Sheridan himself. So I am asking for approval of all three job descriptions, including the stipended job descriptions that have been included in the budget, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine, and if there's no objection, I'd like to speak and state my strong support for this action. We've been very fortunate in the city to have Phil Sheridan, who has just done an amazing job and has really taken on so many additional responsibilities. At this time, with his retirement, I do think it was the appropriate time to review, and I do think that each of those critical positions deserve to be separated. The health, the phys ed, and the athletic director position, there should be some separation. And I think each of those deserve its own special attention. And I think this is the time to do it, to hope that we get somebody like Mr. Sheridan to come in and tackle all those responsibilities, plus the other things that he does, literally working, and I can't imagine how many hours a week he works. We can't expect that, and I think separating though these, as Dr. Levine has outlined, I know he's spent a lot of time on this and has had discussions with Mr. Sheridan and other people in the school department, I think this is the appropriate action to take. It's gonna be difficult to fill his shoes, but I think we're gonna get some excellent men and women that apply for that position. And I think moving the health and phys ed also at this time is the appropriate action. So I just wanted to state my strong support for that recommendation, Dr. Levine.
Thank you.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, on the motion, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I would actually, I just wanna echo some of the mayor's sentiments. Mr. Sheridan's been around a long time, and as he's been around, he's kind of accrued more and more positions. So I, I would just like to actually thank him for all of his years of service and maybe even welcome him to a school committee meeting before the, his term is up and before the year is up, just to give him a pat on the back, because I know it's a, a thankless job at times, it's a difficult job most of the time, and he wears many hats and he wears them all pretty well. So, I'm obviously fully in support of the motion, but I, through the chair to you, Dr. Levine, if we could have him at one of our school committee meetings moving forward, I think that would be a, a great way to show him how much we appreciate his years of service.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's easy to support this motion because, truthfully, anytime I've ever heard from any other school district, they are absolutely shocked at all the duties that our athletic director carried forth. He really and truly was doing the job of three or four different people in other districts, and he did it very well. So even though I think we definitely need to thank him, I don't think we can thank him enough.
Well said, thank you. Roll call vote, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, no, thank you. To thank Mr. Sheridan for all the work that he did might be to not invite him for a meeting. He's such, such a, you know, I came to this city fifteen years ago, and Mr. Sheridan was one of the first people I met, and he's gone above and beyond every, every time I've asked anything of him. He's so supportive, not only of high school athletics, but if this board recalls when we took on middle school athletics, it was at his initiative, and he wanted us to improve and the athletic programs here and provide more opportunities for kids, and that's what Mr. Sheridan's about, it's what he's always been about. He, he provides access and, and equipment and services to our youth sports without ever asking or looking for any, any form of recognition. He's constantly helping our youth kid, our youth from ages three and four, all the way up through the high school and beyond. When our kids return from, when they're home on breaks in college, they're constantly at our athletic fields and conversing with Mr. Sheridan and talking to them about life experiences. He's so much more than a physical education teacher, he's so much more than an athletic director. So, anyway, thank you, thank you, Mr. Sheridan.
Excellent. Roll, roll call vote, please, on the motion?
Yes.
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 Through the chair, two short comments before I end. First comment is a shout-out to Dave Gravel, who has come by some very high-quality athletic equipment and is donating it to the public schools. Mr. Sheridan, who we just talked about, has gone up and taken a look at it and said that it is really worthwhile for us to, to, to accept, and I will give you a list and a a report of what it is that he's giving us at the next meeting. So thank you to Mr. Gravel. Just one last thing, I've been at this a long, long time as a school administrator, mostly as a high school principal in the last fifteen years, as a superintendent. And I can tell you that budgets can be very difficult in difficult times. I just wanna thank the school committee and the mayor, and I have no particular reason that I have to do so, because I'm leaving at some point. This is a great group of people, and I, I hope that the community understands how lucky we are to have a, a school committee and a mayor that actually cares about kids first, does not come in with any other agenda, doesn't play politics at the table. not come in with any other agenda, doesn't play politics at the table, makes sure that kids are serviced with the programs that they need, a mayor who comes up with extra money after he's come up with extra money. This is the best of the best, and I hope this community realizes it and appreciates it, because kids are better off in this community because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Next item is written communications. We do have a letter, a thank you letter from Ken McHugh, Social Studies Department Head, PBD High School. No comments on that. We will go to subcommittee reports. Education, Mr. Hockman?
Now that we've completed a budget, I hope to schedule some subcommittee meetings. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Coppender?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. School safety, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rosignol?
Nothing at this time.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing at this time.
City Council and Advisory Board Liaison, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last night, Mr. Miko and Mr. Olympia and I, along with the Parent Advisory Board members, held our monthly meeting at the PBD Learning Academy, and we had a very interesting meeting with Mr. Seeth Bedard, the director. He explained the program to the parents, he talked about what goes on up there, and then gave us a tour of the facility, and we were very, very pleased to see the new, the new additional classroom at the Learning Academy. Some of the things that Mr. Bedard was talking about was about the, the way that that Learning Academy came about and the way that it changes students' lives, and how it helps so greatly with students who are in different types of situations and are unable to attend classes at the high school. And he told us that he, in the seven years, which actually shocked me, it was hard to believe it's been open for seven years, but that they have had 115 graduates and over 70 have moved on to college or trade school, and the other graduates have gone right straight out to work, many times working in jobs that were accommodated and set up through partnerships that Mr. Bedard has with Mr. Whiting and the corporations at the mall. He spoke about what a great partnership it really is with the mall, how people from the administration at the mall will stop in to visit, how there are some former high school students who will, I'm sorry, high school teachers who stop by every once in a while. He's going to press them into service to help, help conduct some presentations and classes for the students. And it's amazing to hear him talk about the things that the students have come through to reach the point that they're at. So, it was a very informative meeting, very, I think it was a very necessary meeting, because actually none of the parents there had ever heard about the Learning Academy, and it was something that, that I have noticed a lot of members of the public have no idea about, the different programs that the School Department has for students, especially to address the issue of dropouts, because this district has always been very, very careful to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to graduate. And when there was a problem, I think it was about 10 years ago, there, there was a lot of research done and a lot of decisions were made, one of which was Learning Academy, to lower the dropout rate, so that students in puberty would be guaranteed that they graduated and had that high school diploma, which was so important to go out into the world. And the Learning Academy is one piece of that puzzle, and it's coming along very nicely. So, Mr. Bedard also will never toot his own horn, so we made him talk about the awards he's been given for the work he's done at that program on, on many different levels, at the state level, as well as with the Simon Youth Foundation. And again, that was new information for the parents. So, of course, they will take that information back to the elementary schools that they are all based at, and I think it's very, very productive and a very positive time for people to understand what goes on in the schools. People don't know all the work that takes place to save even, even one person, and it was, it was a good meeting. And if Mr. Olympia and Mr. Miko have anything to add, if I forgot anything.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for that report. Mr. Olympia?
Yeah, through the chair, it was, really it was a great meeting last night. I was really personally moved by it. There's some kids in this district, unfortunately, that are really born with two and a half strikes against them, and it really gives these children hope. You hear all the negative stuff, you know, in the paper and things like that, but really people don't understand how, literally, there are some children's lives that are being saved with this program, and I'm really actually looking forward to going to the graduation June 9th at 10 o'clock in the morning at the, at the North Shore Mall, so that's really going to be something I'm really looking forward to. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Mr. Miko?
Through the chair of the committee, I also want to say how great it was to, to visit with that group over at the, at the mall. And again, it's just one of those things that doesn't show up on paper, but it shows how great this city is and how great our school system is, and things like that just don't show up on MCAS scores, and, you know, no one else notices, but I know we notice, and it was just a great time down there to visit with Seeth Bedard and his group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Dr. Levine?
On the same line of reasoning and thought, I want to give a shout out, I'm sure they're not watching this, but I want to give a shout out to the graduates of the Community High School. I went to their graduation today, and you speak of challenges, they may have the next level of challenge, and they took a few detours to get to where they got to, but they got their high school diploma today, and I wanted to congratulate them and their families and their staff, and Craig Macarelli, who is the director, they do very hard and difficult work every single day to help save kids' lives. So, congratulations to all of the graduates, their program, the faculty, the director, and parents and extended family.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Next subcommittee report, Mr. Miko, Building and Grounds?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we, we had a meeting this, this evening before our budget meeting, before our School Committee meeting. We discussed at least four items, in no particular order. The schoolyard paving project at the Center School, that will be handled this, this summer. We also spoke on high school, a couple of high school projects, one being we're getting designs and estimates for potential sports turf for the softball fields at, at the high school, and also for the gymnasium floor, to place down a wooden floor. It's out to bid currently, so we'll be hopefully hearing on that. Also, the summer tennis courts at the high school are going to be resurfaced and renovated. And last but not least, in regards to the Kylie Building, we spoke about moving administration offices from the Kylie Building to another location downtown, which is 27 Lowell Street, and we spoke on that, the mayor spoke on that. We looked at the, the reasons for relocating downtown, where there would be a centralized government across the street, where they could share resources with City Hall. There are professional offices downtown where both employees and visitors would be able to use them. Bringing 25 to 30 employees downtown would, would hopefully also add and generate more business downtown. We also talked about how the Kylie Building's in pretty bad shape, and it needs major renovations if we're going to use it at some point as a school, and there's currently a statement of interest that we hopefully should hear by the end of the summer, late July, August. And we took a vote on the, the move, subcommittee took a vote on the move in favor of relocating school admin from Kylie Building to 27 Lowell Street. So, I would bring that to this committee and make, and make a motion that we vote on that as well.
If I could, Mr. Miko, just, and thank you, that report was very thorough. There was a lot we covered today in the meeting, and I think you covered it excellent, in an excellent manner. Just to expand a little bit on the Kylie School proposal, and it is a proposal that I'm bringing forward for hopeful adoption by the School Committee, would be received and potentially voted on by the City Council this Thursday evening. But it's to enter into a lease agreement with the owner of 27 Lowell Street, which is directly across the street from City Hall. Professional offices there, 6,000 square feet of professional offices, where we'd move the school administration offices to that location, and as was outlined by Mr. Miko from the meeting, a number of reasons that I believe this is an excellent decision and an excellent move for the school district, is, one, to create a centralized government. Sometimes in the city, having City Hall on the opposite side of the city from the school administration building can kind of create some issues. I think having it right across the street, being able to share resources, being able to share information at a much quicker pace would allow us to better respond to the different needs of both the school and the city. And I think having that, that partnership across the street will go a long way towards continuing to, to make it easier for us to, to assist people when they need assistance. Secondly, creation of, of more jobs and more people down the downtown certainly goes, coincides with the, the shared vision of really everybody, I, I think I can speak to that, of creating a more vibrant downtown, bringing more professionals downtown. People are visiting the school administration building every day. I think we'll bring more people downtown and create the vibrancy that we all want. I think that'll be a, a big addition to the downtown area. But third, in, in a lot of ways, most importantly, is I do feel that we have outstanding individuals that work for the City of Puberty in our school administration offices, and they are working at a subpar building at, at the Kylie School. Whether or not the Mass School Building Authority agrees to partner with us in renovating the Kylie and potentially using that as additional school space, I do think that the Kylie School is not where we want our school administration to be. I do believe that they need to be in a more professional setting. That building needs a great deal of work. We, as a city, as a school committee, will have to decide, depending on the MSBA decision, where we go with the Kylie School, but what I do know is that I don't think it's appropriate for our administrators to be there. And I think entering into a five-year lease with some additional option years for the City of Puberty is the appropriate step to take as we develop our long-term plan for school administration offices, as we continue to review our school buildings. So, I do think this is a appropriate step to take. I would strongly advocate for it. This would allow us, again, time to come up with a long-range plan, but really, essentially, we need, we have professionals working at a subpar building that I'm not proud of, and we have people every day coming to that building for their needs. I think coming downtown to a professional office with City Hall nearby, again, to share resources, share information, be able to, in unity, help those that come down to the school administration offices is the way to go. Hopefully, I can get the support of the School Committee and get the support of the City Council at an upcoming meeting, maybe as early as Thursday, would be a, I think, beneficial to the city in, in those aspects. So, turning it back to you, Mr. Miko, I did want to just expand upon that a little bit more.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the move from the Kylie Building to 27 Lowell Street.
Second. Heard the motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Hockman. On the motion, Mr. Hockman, then Mr. Rosignol?
Yes, thank you, and I was, even though I'm not a member of the Building and Grounds Subcommittee, the chairman was gracious enough to, to allow the entire School Committee to be present and actually speak at the meeting, and I want to thank you for that publicly. I want to be clear that this motion is for the movement of every person working at the Kylie Building to 27 Lowell Street or some other location as deemed necessary. Just want to make that very, very clear.
I would amend that, please. Thank you.
And, yes, and that was spoken by Mr. Olympia and Mr., a number of people at the meeting. That is what I would like as well. I think that there would be, there will be a cost of, it's 6,000 square feet, $12 a square foot for the first year, so there'll be some cost for that. That'll be a part of our school budget, but that is offset by the savings in utility costs at the Kylie School, and I think there's a very balanced trade there. So, that is absolutely an important part of this, and my intention is to have everybody out of the Kylie. We can have some storage there of furniture, files, things of that nature, certainly, but I would like to move all of our employees to a better location. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Rosignol, then Mrs. Dunn?
Actually, that was exactly my question, so thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
Actually, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Mayor. During that discussion at the Building and Grounds Committee, the, the point that we would actually be saving energy at the building in an equivalence to what we need to pay for the rent is what actually helped me make the decision for my vote in support of this. I do think that it's going to be a necessity. I'm hopeful that the MSBA is going to come through and approve our statement of interest. Being able to have the administrative staff settled could actually help us, because we will probably be able to begin work that much earlier if that biggest issue is taken care of. And I, I do appreciate all the facts that were brought forward today at the Subcommittee meeting, because it was a very, very good and detailed discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympia?
Through the chair. I'm also in support of this motion. I was looking at the savings too, and that kind of tipped the scales for me. If I looked at, you know, just even if I was looking at the budget, our utility costs run about $1.5 million if I, if you don't include telephone. We have 11 buildings in the district, so you're looking at about $140,000 per building for utilities, and I know they're not all the same, but the point being is, I feel confident that the savings are going to cover that $72,000 of rent that will be expended. Also, too, there's nothing been, and I think the public will need to know this, that there's nothing that has been decided on the use of the Kylie Building. I think there's been a lot of speculation out there that some decisions have been made. There are things that, that really hasn't even been discussed or voted on yet, so that's just what I want to add.
Through the chair, I just want to expand on that point, Mr. Olympia. There are many different things that that building could be used for, but we're so far away from, we don't even know what the major use of these, the major need of the city will be at that time. So, you're absolutely right. No decisions have been made. We've taken a look at a number of different configurations, and we will continue to do so as that building is renovated and the School Committee and the Superintendent decide what the best use for that building will be.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In Subcommittee, I did not vote to move this forward. I was the only dissent, but since we've had our budget discussion and since the will of the committee was to move forward in this, I'm going to support this motion. I, I think that, and Dr. Levine said it eloquently earlier, this board comes at every decision from different points of view, different perspectives, but always with kids first and foremost in their mind. In the Subcommittee, my biggest fear was this is a really difficult budget that we basically went through, and I could not support that at that time, because I didn't know what the final numbers were going to be, I didn't know what the final direction of our budget was going to entail. Now that the board as a whole adopted that line item, I'm going to be in support of this, because I do think it is substandard as far as where they are. My point for my dissent in the Subcommittee was that that was $80,000, and if the numbers didn't work out, we could have used that to save a teacher, but through our hard work, through the budget discussion, we ended up saving teachers in, in, in other manner. So, I am going to support this motion as it's constituted, because in my mind, we're kind of getting the best of both worlds. We saved programs through our lengthy budget discussion, and we're getting our staff out of a situation that frankly, it's good that they're getting out of. So, I just wanted to say that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Appreciate that. Mrs. Dunn, Mrs. Coppender, then Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. I, I do just want to express that one of the reasons that I didn't support this while we were having budget conversations was the money. Now that we've gained some further information, it seems to be that the savings and utility costs of closing the Kylie is what will be able to help us afford to do the move. If that was not the case, I would not be in favor of it, but it's a wash, so either way, that money was going to happen anyway that way. But just as my colleagues have said, you know, we try to put teachers in front of students, and when it came to something like that, I thought we could have held off for another year, but now that it has been presented the way that it has But now that it has been presented the way that it has been presented, and I see how the money washes out anyway, I will be in support of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Coppender. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be honest, coming into that meeting, I, I was nervous too because of the money, and as I said, you've put my mind at ease there. And also, looking at the building and hearing, hearing you talk about wanting our staff in a professional set, a professional setting and that the building was substandard for that use. I'm coming from the place where we had a building with no roof and a blue top and pigeons, so to me, the Kylie seemed really nice. The rapid deterioration, deterioration of the building has certainly been an awful problem, but it seemed really, you know, quite palatial compared to the past. But one of the things that I was thinking of during the night was moving the office across the street from City Hall. Aside from, you know, different things that the staff has to go through, I was thinking of somebody just moving into PBD who needs to register their child for school. It's going to be so much easier for them to go over to City Hall, get a birth certificate, come across the street, you know, show their tax bill, register a child for school, or for someone who's going to get their, their work permit. That's always a question. People go to City Hall, and then they're directed to go all the way to the opposite end of the city to get their work permit, and then they have to come back to get another signature. For the ease of the public and for the benefit of the public, this is actually going to be a very good move. And it's a very good governmental decision.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yeah. The motion was made by, sorry, the motion was made by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Sorry, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Miko, for the report. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio, anything to report?
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled for May thirty-first. It's a Wednesday night at seven o'clock at the Higgins Library. I invited Ms. Grooby and CPAC to attend, and also really the special ed parents, anybody that wants to come. It's more, it's going to be a meet and greet type of meeting and really kind of, you know, set some parameters maybe going forward for the next school year. You know, how we're going to meet and entail and all that good stuff.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. New business will be handled in the regular course. Mrs. Coppender, do you have a?
A quick thing, through the chair, Dr. Levine, could you start looking at some dates for our volunteer reception? Maybe and merge it with the retirees? You have it?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't have it, I'm sorry. That's all right. I'll get it afterwards.
Yeah, and I think it's on the central calendar.
Thank you.
June thirteenth. Six P.M., Higgins Library.
Thank you.
That's before our regular meeting.
At the, in the cafeteria.
Yes.
Higgins Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, okay.
Yeah.
That's right, not here.
Mrs. Dunn, did you have a comment before we break?
Yes, this is an invitation extended, of course, to the public as well as specifically to the school committee members. Tomorrow evening at the high school is the annual art exhibit, and it is a really phenomenal event. If you can go, please make sure you can. Tomorrow night's the opening. They have, they have the art exhibit two nights in a row, but they also keep things on pretty much for the rest of the week. But if you can go tomorrow night, it's, it's really something to see what the kids create.
To that, Mr. Mayor, there's a grand opening at six o'clock on the li, on the balcony of the fieldhouse. So if you can make it at six, there's kind of a grand opening ceremony.
Right.
Great. I just want to, before we break, I just want to thank all of you. This was an excellent meeting. We covered an amazing amount of ground today. Certainly the budget work, very difficult. We had a lot of challenges, and I think we really did an exceptional job trying to meet the needs as best we could. As well as covering another, a, a number of other important topics, planning for the future. And, you know, really, I was very proud to be a part of the group tonight, as I always am. But I want to thank everybody who worked, not only the school committee members, but our superintendent, assistant superintendent, Mr. Stanton, who really has worked extremely hard on this budget, working the numbers for us to make sure we know what, where we stand and what we're moving forward with. But really, I thought tonight's meeting was excellent, and I missed the last couple of meetings. I was really looking forward to tonight, and I really believe that we did a good job, so I wanted to thank everybody that was a part of it.
Thank you.
Next meeting is on, no, I wanted to announce the budget meeting. So we scheduled the budget review meeting for June sixth at seven thirty at this location. June sixth, seven thirty will be the public hearing on the budget. Thank you, everyone.
Motion adjourned.